According.
A column being ordered, this is a meeting of the Hampton Morris Selectment of Water Health. Being held in Townhouse Auditorium October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. This meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conferencing technology as allowed by Governor Baker's. March of twenty twenty executive order. Lee Stanford, please leave.
But the United States of America is the republic we would stand for nation under our individual liberty and justice law.
Want to skip down so you know everyone's here to talk about the special town meeting board? Let him go over on it.
Trouble.
Don't just want downstairs Carol, just come back.
Yeah, I'm gonna grab him to come back.
No, you come back, he's on his way back.
Okay. Got it, who's on first?
Thanks, Dick.
What's on second? As you last saw this, I've added the initials to the right. Those who are going to be the speakers to each of the warrant articles. What's that?
Not consistent with the file, there are reasons.
There's no reason for it, I thought that we were consistent. It looked like C R and J F were not consistent and I checked it and they weren't. I also changed around. The way we present. The motion for the police budget adjustments upon the recommendation. Of our town treasurer who said doing it this way would make it clearer. So that's changed.
So I'm reading. I move the following appropriation to handle least PD funded, let's see.
So first to be reduced as follows, and then you have reductions and then it says further.
Am I gonna read the line item? Do I have to read the line item?
The motion.
The number?
The number, well, you.
Yeah, I suggested using the old numbers out of the green sheet because that's what the town meeting people are using. That's why I gave fifty seven points.
I I changed that because up above on the on the warrant itself.
System uses those accounting numbers.
Yeah.
But the town meeting people are not familiar with that, the appropriations are by the fifty seven point whatever, so.
Yeah.
And it's less words for for Don, less numbers for Don to read.
Well, I wasn't trying to do that, I was.
You're testing it.
The only reason why I changed what you had put there was that I'm using those numbers up above, so I figured.
But either way, it's gonna be okay, right?
It'd be confusing.
So I have to read the line item number, the 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 previous amount and then the new amount.
The three that are going down and the two that are going up because there changes in appropriations.
Okay, then it then it says and further, and I just keep reading it further, I don't stop, we don't vote on that first.
No, and further, no.
Right?
We're both, we're voted all.
Okay.
And then at the end, so the handled police budget for fiscal twenty-two is one point four eight three, net reduction of one hundred and seventy-four thousand.
I recommend not having that total number in there, it is not a voted number, it is a summary for information. And I'm not even sure, so if it's wrong, it penalizes us, if it's right, it gives us nothing. I think because we vote the line items individually. That's was just my recommendation. Well, you know me, I got.
Yes, your explanation did not give that as an explanation to it, this is gonna decrease the total number by a hundred something.
That I thought that was, yeah, that that has value.
Right.
To net it out so people aren't trying to do them out.
So I would stop reading it, equipment from eight thousand seven hundred and nine thousand zero sixty-nine. So if they have a police budget, I don't, I stop at one million four eighty-three?
No, you stop.
No, he doesn't want one, one million four eighty-three in case that somehow is wrong.
So I stop at nine oh six ninety.
Right.
Well, I.
And just give that line beforehand before you make the motion, say, by the way, this motion will provide a net reduction of.
If I were in your shoes, I would say some hand and please of the fiscal year two thousand two. Reflects in that reduction of one seventy-four, three forty-three.
And then make.
Didn't read them.
I've got one, I'd make that part of the motion, but you don't have to, you're right.
Because like you say, if you do that and then something changes, it.
You're you're right, John, you're right, John, okay.
No, you're right, you want to get the information, by the way, this following thing here is gonna drop. It's your right.
I think, you know, we need to give them the information that there's a reduction and what the what the rate amount is.
It does have to be part of the.
I did have the town treasurer check my numbers and he said that they were correct, so.
We got lucky, yeah. And the expensive calculator that cares money paid for, that's nice, yeah.
Right, what else we got?
So we're gonna ask the moderator to take five and six in reverse.
Yes.
Okay.
And. Well, the match for the small bridge hasn't changed. And let's see. Assessors is the same. Building Department, same. Community Preservation, I tweaked that a little bit. Just to put in there the redundant language that we always have to use. Appropriate reserve from community preservation annual revenues. And and so. That's that's the substantive change.
So is Doug gonna make the motion on that one?
Yeah, I have Doug down as making the motion.
Yes, I had discussed this with Connie and. We thought it made sense subject to the moderator's approval of the motion.
Yeah. Okay, and the map was was brought to me today by Connie. It is filed with the clerk as is the Amoresco map, so the exhibits are there.
For the library one, the trustees are meeting on Saturday, Craig and all years of liaison, do you want to like stop in and just ask which one would want to make the motion?
The H R S D reduction in the assessment, I don't have a number for that, so I just. Left it a bit fuzzy that will accept whatever basically they reduce this by. And that will be applied to the fiscal twenty-two assessment. Short-term debt, I use the number that Dick gave us, three seventy-five, yes?
Before you move off the C P A article, in in the motion perhaps should indicate that money is coming from the community preservation trust. Does indicate source of funds in the motion.
Okay, let's see. From the community preservation trust, alright.
Just so that it's clear.
Okay, and. Well, going back to. The last articles, I took Dick's number there, three seventy-five, four four three. For short-term debt reduction.
Dick, is that gonna take care of all of it, is that take care of all of it?
Puts it right up.
What was it for again?
The police radios and the duck truck.
And the last two articles are missing numbers, that would be. The amount to reduce the tax rate and also the amount to transfer to stabilization. But I you would note, I would note that we're getting very close to the ten percent recommended by the D O R. In in our rainy day fund, we got one million two sixty-five, that number came from the treasurer today. And the general fund budget is fourteen million eight, so we're very close to ten percent.
That would lend to, I think, Dick's recommendation, maybe in the annual town meeting, we start a separate fund possibly for O P E T at that point. You know, for over the ten percent, you could start.
I, yeah, I.
Or we can start exploring it at least.
Yeah, it it that that trust is a little bit complicated and. Be perfectly honest, I kind of softened my vision on that because we're paying so much. To catch up handling county retirement that the O P E T is kind of a small potatoes compared to that. We're gonna be hit very, very hard on that coming up for the next fifteen years, so.
A hundred every year, basically.
Yeah, we have, we will, we will be going down next year.
Personnel, right, right.
Yeah, we reported, I just did the audit, we did a hundred and ninety-seven thousand less in payroll, so. Technically, that's about a sixty-seven, seven thousand dollar reduction, although the rate goes up, but it'll probably be fifty thousand less next year. So. Dispatch. One fireman, because they're using car timers to fill that third spot and or the health agent. So even with the substantial. Salary increases that happen, we still make quite positive progress there. Where do we stand on the? On Article twelve?
I don't think we have.
I don't know that number yet.
Yeah, it's a little bit, sorry, eighty, ninety, something like that, ballpark.
That was the estimate.
Well, if it's four one eight, don't we get our proportionate share reduced?
Yeah, like twenty.
Twenty-two percent of that? Yeah, yeah.
So I haven't seen an actual number, I mean, it's not twenty-two percent even, it's like twenty-one point eight something.
So what happens if we don't take, if we take no action, it just rolls into F Y twenty-three free cash, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Not the, not the worst thing in the world, thank you.
I took the four one eight number from the business manager's letter, so I think that's accurate, so just whatever percent.
But I thought that they were gonna reissue the letter.
They were.
You haven't seen anything yet.
No, I didn't see it.
And I got a payment due in ten days.
Okay. What else we got here?
Well, the question's gonna be, what are we going against the tax rate, we did get the new email from Kelly, I don't know if she shared it with your board, Carol?
Yeah, I just got it.
Right, just now.
Our, yeah.
And her email last week that talked about with her figures, the tax rate was down. You know, lower nineteen numbers based on new growth, et cetera. Obviously, that's all relative in terms of values. So at this point, Dick, you made the point before, if you're gonna transfer anything. Transfer enough to keep the increase down, expected two percent or something like that, so you take away the spike. Well, at this point, are we actually gonna see that, are we actually seeing a spike in the?
Right now. This is a little tricky to explain because. All the spending that you have on this warrant is from free cash, there's no appropriations involved in it. However, the hundred and seventy-four thousand from the police is a negative appropriation, so they 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 work differently. Given that. A two percent increase in taxes would. Leave us about four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars left over for use for stabilization or any other use. One related question we had was the excavator that isn't on the warrant. Are you planning on bringing that back in the spring? And if so, do you want to pay for it out of F Y twenty-two or F Y twenty-three?
I think the board had decided to kick that back to the capital committee for their recommendation, and then it would be a.
They actually, the capital committee actually voted favorably on that project. On that acquisition, but so.
Cliff had a suggestion that if you wanted to spend by that, if you plan on possibly buying that. At a special time meeting in the spring, we could leave money in free cash for that purpose.
But you have. Or for another purpose, if something. But you'd have to handle a special time meeting inside the town meeting.
Which fortunately haven't had to do lately.
No, I know. Go back to your numbers there, you talk, we're looking at. A total reduction in the voted budget between the potential school assessment and the police thing.
Well, I haven't factored in the, I haven't factored in. The hundred and seventy-four was the number on the police. I didn't factor in the school because I didn't know what you guys are doing yet.
Yeah, so if you had two fifty taken off the appropriated amount at the top, the town meeting, what does the tax rate go up? With only.
I'm gonna answer the question slightly differently.
Okay.
If you do everything on here. And you. Apply some money to bring the tax rate down to, the tax bills down to a two percent increase, you'd be left with four hundred and thirty-two thousand. For what, for stabilization or leaving in free cash or any other purpose you wanted. If you, for every hundred and forty thousand dollars more you apply to the tax rate, it's a one percent change. So if you wanted to be at. One and a half percent instead of two, throw another seventy thousand on it.
But that number you're talking about there does not take into consideration a a school assessment drop at this point.
No.
Okay. So all it would do is make the increase a little less harmful, if you will. You're gonna say if you put, you know, if you keep it at the two and a half and then all of a sudden the assessment drop comes in, the increase will actually only be.
No, because because no, because you're not.
You wouldn't see it till free cash next year because it would be unacceptable.
Exactly, wouldn't check, unless we take some action, it's not gonna change your twenty-two rate because the appropriation is the same. You're gonna yell if I get this wrong, right? Okay.
Just, you know, just whack it.
I'm following.
I mean, we're not in bad shape, I'm just worried about the future. We've got two poss- potentially large capital projects with the firehouse and possibly the town hall, once we have, understand what our direction is.
In the senior center.
Well, yeah, eventually.
But it's possible, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, I. You you want to be as strong positioned as possible.
So if you, you said if you lower for every hundred and forty thousand put against tax rate, it lowers it one percent?
Yeah. Like I said, my my base numbers are based on two percent, you know, we've averaged two and a half in the past, but there's no reason to do that.
It'll just be six hundred equal to dollars or something like that, the other way of computing it.
Yeah.
So then, just by going back next year, and I think you and I chatted at the last meeting, is there a potential of refinancing the police station debt? You were gonna check with that and see if we're outside the window or not.
I. I have not followed up on that fully, I've talked to one of the, I actually talked to the financial advisor for the high school because. She was talking about other things and she was suspicious about the the call provisions that we have in the original document. Normally, you put in call positions to make the document, the original offering, more attractive. And but I've gotta get a hold of of our actual F A in the bank and have her double check the documents. I'm suspecting that probably it won't do, there won't be any benefit for a few more years.
Are we at eastern or you're a bank on that?
It's a bond issue, it's a lot of banks. U S Bank right now is carrying, but it's what we're paying at the moment.
What's the rate on that?
I'd have to go back and look at the offer. I I am not a bond expert, you know? I mean, I've done one of these in my life, and that's police station.
If we get the ninety thousand from the region. For Tom, then we got, then we took another fifty thousand in free cash, that would still leave you to about four hundred thousand in free cash.
Okay.
Right, yeah, you know, and and that'd bring us down to one percent tax increase.
Now, I, my suggestion to to this board is, you know, figure out what you want to accomplish. And then let the numbers people do the numbers to make it work, and we're all gonna, we're all gonna be awful at it.
Yeah, yeah.
And you still bring stabilization up to twelve percent of the budget at that point by putting four hundred into it. You know, now you're at one point four, sorry, one point six at that point, so you're in pretty good shape, you say you had.
Yeah, I mean, we're.
You're gonna be in good shape, and then next year, there's a potential of the high school bond number dropping as well, we saw the green metals falling off, so.
Yeah, but that's outside two and a half, it'd be a help.
No, I know, true to the total budget number next year, we're seeing a potential, obviously, our debt load is dropping.
What do you guys think?
Really? And I've thought about it. We have. Such positive cash flows. That I think the residents of the town should see some of that, not only the good management, but the increased revenues. So my, my thinking is to look at an increase less than two percent. For the current residents as opposed to saving for future expenditures and benefit in future. We haven't wanted to maintain a healthy stabilization and to. Lock the rate down to say one percent or one and a half percent. And I think what that does is. Taxpayers. While the benefit of.
The market values.
My years of situation. And yet it leaves the town in a strong position over the next several years because, in my opinion. After all, federal money dries up, there's been incredible.
Yeah.
And everybody's gonna be looking at the money. So stronger than we are as we go into the next three to five years, I think we're better off with it, whether that.
So I think. I think a charge done might be to our financial team that set two goals for them. What numbers do we need for one percent, what numbers do we need for one and a half percent? And if Bob could follow up with Aaron and say, are we gonna get the official letter from the school with the assessment reduction? Because that gives us eighty, ninety thousand dollars to play with against those numbers.
You're gonna get everything else.
You're gonna get that money anyways.
Right, but it wouldn't help us with, you know, if we want to keep that, if we want to get the one percent, that's the half percent you're talking about right there.
But if these, if we're talking about paying off the short-term debt and putting another two hundred thousand or whatever it is into stabilization. And then we still have five hundred thousand, four hundred fifty thousand. And if we took a hundred and forty out of that, we still have three hundred and ten thousand, that doesn't even include the ninety-two thousand from the.
Right, so you want to be able, when you get up or now gets up and makes that financial statement. These are our recommendations and this will bring up the average tax bill. Even though town meeting voted a three point five percent increase in the budget, the tax bill every time will only go up one and a half percent.
One percent, I like one percent.
That's fine, let's have those numbers, because that's a great opening statement.
You you don't need those numbers, you just need to decide whether you want one percent or one and a half percent.
That's what I'm saying, if we want. Can't we see the two different sets of numbers?
Both ways.
Why? I'm moving one percent then, fine, show us.
Make more work for you.
So no matter what, one percent is gonna put money in stabilization, this question, how much you want for that?
Right, yes, you're you're right, right now. Uh, what did I say, one forty? The, leave us, we went to one percent to. Back to my head, I love it, probably be two hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Cliff, what do you think?
But, you know.
One percent, okay.
If you put it into stabilization, you're gonna need a two-thirds vote to cover the cost of the excavator.
Well, that's the next question, if so, if we're, if we're left with, let's say it's two ninety. Do you want to? Pull out money for the excavator or you just want to put it in stabilization and we can, if we need to take it out of there, we can.
Well, tell you what you could do, is you could leave the money in the assessment number. Which is more than across the excavator and do that motion to transfer into a purchase warrant article in the spring.
You could do that, or you.
And if you don't have that final number for school, let that ninety thousand sit there and then make that choice in April or May.
Yeah, or we, so we can either leave it in free cash or put it in stabilization.
Right.
And you're right, we might be able to just do a line item transfer in the spring anyway.
Right. If you don't have that hard number anyhow, then.
We all agree on one percent?
One? Carol wants ten, but what we want.
No, I mean, what I always balanced, I mean, I appreciate what Doug said, but I always balance it with this. Is, you know, I love the steady, you know, I don't like the spike, so if you do one and next year, whatever, five, that doesn't feel right, so. I try to, you know, I like, I like the idea of keeping the increases, you know, without, without those spikes and with, you know, consistency. Um, you know, I can, with the one, and which is a great number.
Yeah.
So Dick, you said something before.
Between one and two percent, you know, what a problem to have.
If we did nothing. The rate's still going down, correct?
Um, sure, well, yeah. We gotta do something, there's always something.
Right.
So right now, to beat the two percent, I applied a hundred and seventy thousand in free cash, plus the reduction in the police budget. And that got us down to two. So, yeah, there has to be, there there will be some number in there, otherwise we'd be at like three and a half percent.
Yeah, and that was always been your point in the past, and I think Doug said the same thing, look, people understand it, tell me, you voted a net increase. You know, the result of your actions is the tax rate or taxes are going up. But because of good management and some good luck, we're gonna be able to offset that increase.
Yeah, I mean, the free cash numbers is more than twice what it was last year, but we've historically had. Half a million dollar free cash. At least for the last five years or so.
One percent?
One percent.
I'm hearing the voice of Dick Jones in my ear, that he doesn't need the town to be his banker, his banker, holding his money for.
I remember John Em saying, have your time.
He got it from Dick.
The thing you have to remember is that.
Alright, one?
We missed your silly comments at the end of Microsoft.
One, 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 one.
One percent increase, yeah.
It'll be it, we got it. We're picking so. You're supposed to make careful that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, let's see, thanks, Dick. Alright, thank you. We have the police contract, we have any police out here?
We do.
How you wanna do it?
I looked at the redlined version and I compared it with the existing contract and. I think the red line. Items reflect the changes that the selectmen agreed to. I may. Think there's one. One area. Where. We should take a look here.
Did your membership, did this present your membership and?
Unanimously passed.
You know, notice entered.
Know the centers.
I I don't have notes on the certification issue, that's Article six. I'm not sure we discussed. Or not sure we we came up with an agreement on that, but just take note of it. The town would not pursue notice of certification.
That was a previous agreement.
With what?
That we entered into when. When. Issue came up. Two years ago.
So you've just incorporated this, so there ought to be a side letter I could find?
Yeah, I actually, I think I have it on my phone, I can show you.
All this, like this thing's not being discussed in our three meetings and then showing up here. I know what you're saying, but I mean.
We had discussed combining everything into one.
Well, I got it, but I, hey, by the way, the amendment, Article six is gonna be in this thing. If it came up in our conversation last week, I don't remember.
There's a couple of things I saw that were missing too, though.
Article nineteen, just to nitpick a little bit. Looks like there's been a change from our change to his change. I think we should go back to our. Because it's a, it's a double subject.
Yeah, we didn't make any changes to that.
No.
They're just grammarily changed.
That's all, that's all, just technical.
Where where is that?
Article nineteen, I have the redline copy, it's in the last.
Yeah.
Next to last paragraph. If any uniforms and or equipment is changed.
I think it should be our change.
What did you have, Rick? What did you have, Rick?
I noticed it was missing was when we talked about the. Technological common practice, you guys agreed, I'll just come common workplace, it's not in. And then there was another thing that I think Bob brought up a long time ago in Article thirteen. In the safety committee. Um, in the safety committee. Um, I just added some additional verbiage to it and I don't see anything that's changed in there at all. That was. That was probably presented in the first meeting. That. Is that in that packet, can you mail me? Uh, it was in whatever the original packet was with all the the items I was looking for. It was, yeah, just an amendment to Article thirteen, it was just. Pretty much just expanding upon the safety committee, its roles, okay, nothing crazy.
Hey, can I go back to IT?
Yeah, I wanted to go there too.
That not besides the five percent, you're also being paid to come back.
I think we need to remove Article twenty-two out of that line.
Yeah, because that I don't recall that, but not only you get the five percent, but you're also getting your time on these.
So what we had discussed and I thought agreed upon was any extra, all the extra work created by the IT position. That's what that stipend was for and eliminated all the. We used to put in like, we'd have to put in four hours if we get called at work to do one hour's worth of work and we thought. That was kind of overkill, so that stipend cover all that stuff and the only time we got the overtime is we had to come in for a project that took that four hours.
I don't know if we went there, I thought was we were covering you with the five percent.
Five percent is like, you know.
You know, if you if you do overtime, you know, just regular detail work and I I I think your overtime is fine there, it's Article twenty-two. But um, as you know, you're you're getting the five percent increase. To either work from home or come in for.
Basically, yeah.
Yes, that's why, that's why you're getting it. To boost, to be the, to be the guy.
Also, John had a comment about Article twenty-four. Should be redlined. Um, but. That was, that agreement. Predates this. Contract update, so I think it wasn't redlined for that reason.
Correct, there was a, I put all the past. Amendments or whatever into here, I did a red line up that are already approved, I only tried the red line stuff that we discussed in our changing in the last meeting.
Well. I think the red line should have notes in there, you know, listing the MOU it's coming from, et cetera, so. If you're saying, you know, we have this MOU, we have that MOU and. More details, I think we had in our discussion. You're saying twenty-four, there was an MOU and that's why it's changed, but there's no red line showing. Why it's different from the contracted place. Down reading.
We were adding. The previous MOUs.
That's okay, but there's nothing here showing that, you know, it's redline, why there's a difference. If you're saying there's a difference, why is it different than what's contracted? If you're, if you're saying Bob twenty-four is different because of an existing. Uh, MOU and why isn't it redlined in the contract? Uh, this is why the language is different.
And the other thing. The cell phones, can we just put in that you guys are the use person?
Sure.
Just to clarify, that's what you guys want to use?
So, let's collect Article Six, Article Six, do you agree? Are we linked? That was, that was a past thing, right? You're looking it up?
Um, yeah, I'm trying to find it, I.
In Article nine, where those red, where we all count that.
Nine.
That's the first issue of overtime.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Three officers. I think it's ten, twelve, thirteen or fourteen.
Seventeen.
Thirteen of the safety.
Seventeen.
What were the changes for the safety?
I'll send you the image. What was your name?
And it's uh.
And I don't think we actually made a discussion about what we're doing about the Kyrie. Of uncharmed. Mr. Hellman.
Fifty percent of the cost.
You changed the last line of that on seventeen. I don't think we had a discussion about that, where you said the town shop continued to pay fifty percent of the cost of members' ultimate terms upon retirement. And then you put in seventy-five percent.
My understanding was it went by the handbook, handbook said it. For our discussion, the handbook, it follows into retirement.
Headbook provides that uh. The same uh premium split. Uh, obtains for both retirees as well as current employees. We if we want to. Change that, I think we have to change the handbook too.
Right, the current one is. We have not made a decision yet, we have not made a decision that we're carrying for. Into the retirees.
Right.
And it certainly wouldn't be seventy-five if we were doing that, it would have been the same stagger.
Same staggered.
Right. And I don't think we actually have a uh. Anything from our town treasurer's, the impact on our budget from the retiree standpoint, we have the impact from current employee standpoint only. I think, Don, you would ask them how this affects. Right now, there's no change, fifty percent, the handbook has not been changed.
So the handbook, but the handbook says it'll be the same as.
The handbook says fifty percent, they're spelled out twice. So we're saying we're changing the other part. We haven't said anything about the.
I can bring the handbook up if you'd like. I'm sorry, this is two seventeen, uh, there's, there was revision in two nineteen, let me see, here it is. So we're looking for insurance. Retirees health insurance.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's.
All right, so it is not the same, it's the whatever's.
Doesn't give a number, it just says that we have to revise that if we're going to. Adopt a different policy.
Or keep the policy that we're staggering it up.
Keep the policy staggered up.
Right, so the numbers in here should be basically shall retiree health insurance shall follow the policy in the in the town handbook. Remember saying, Mike?
I'm sorry.
The handbook says it shall, it shall work at the same rate that the health insurance, so therefore there shouldn't be a seventy-five number, seventy-five isn't in year three.
Okay.
Shall follow the town.
Okay.
Leave it like that.
Yeah, let's change it to sixty percent, January one.
You don't need to.
Seventy percent, July one. And seventy-five, July one, twenty-three.
Or shall follow the town.
You don't have, you don't have the uh other amendments. There should be three other amendments, you don't, you don't have a copy of them.
I have, yeah, I have everything in in the file.
I don't have it on my phone, but I'm trying to.
You're looking, you're looking at the side letters over the years, is that it?
Yes, it would have been done.
Yeah, I have those.
It would have been done. Twenty-one, it would have been done two thousand eighteen.
Right, okay, so here we are. So. This is an amendment from. Two nineteen. And there's an, this is other amendment too.
There was one that we did this year, which was.
Yes, is this the one you're talking about, prior one? This is two eighteen. I don't know, does.
Yeah, the bottom, the bottom line, the bottom paragraph.
Yeah. So that was just what you incorporated into the final.
Correct, we took, we took all the language.
Okay.
Which was what we discussed, some of the stuff we may have missed red line, but. It was like six hours of doing it, so.
So should we note somewhere in here too that we're throwing away all these amendments and this is the Bible now?
Well, the beginning, this contract receives all previous contracts and amendments, right at the beginning.
Yeah, I can add it in, but I worry about adding that exact word because if another one comes up, this contract contradicts whatever changes we make in the future. So I can put as of this date, as of this day.
No, I think it's actually incumbent on you to kind of find all the amendments, if you don't.
No, that's what I'm saying, I'm just saying, we're making a.
Well, they're going to be tonight, in a certain world, to say, give you a week or so to look. Want to make it right.
Yeah.
Because we had a couple of things here, so I'll say, I'll come back in two weeks. So we got town meeting next week. Okay, we researched our files, we didn't find any more, yeah, we're going to put that line.
Yeah, we have no agenda yet, uh, for six P M prior to the town meeting.
What was the other questions?
If you can get this buttoned up by Monday, it'd be great, you know, research, come back to us, say, Mike, Mike, we looked at, these are the last three amendments, there are no others, so we'll. We'll put that line in.
Yeah, as like, like Mike said, as of this date. All previous amendments are. Into this, merged into the.
Right, we're saying it supersedes previous kind and amendments. And we don't want you to come back and come once, oh, we found the other one that scrap of paper underneath the copier.
Right, no, there's no other amendments, yeah, that's fine.
So you're going to put a line in the new contract saying that this incorporates. All previous side letters or amendments.
Well, I don't think you have to say incorporate, because maybe it doesn't, but it supersedes all contracts we have.
Is there something we're not aware of that you have?
Oh, yeah.
No, I, you know, I think I have all the amendments that have been made, at least in recent years, in the file and. There's only the ones that you saw and then the the ones we did recently.
Yeah, there was two, there was two from previous that most of the stuff that we negotiated. Eliminated those, and then there was the two that we did this last time. That we incorporated into this contract, so it should be, I don't know of anything else.
So Bobby, I think we just posted, we get posted Monday, six thirty, either and just.
Six thirty, okay.
We'll have to, we discussed the IT stuff, my partner, because. There was, I don't know, there was a misunderstanding between our group and your group discussing that, but if that's going to be the case, we'll just take it out because. We make more doing that all the time, with the sixty dollars a week and I can't wait to save the money. You know what I mean? Changes stuff dramatically on our end. Especially with all work with dispatcher work there right now.
But those were reasons we went to the five percent, so it was still within eighty from posting overtime.
No, it's a five percent was. As I thought we discussed, was to cover all the stuff that we do outside work, the one hour phone calls that we get or half three step phone calls or all the extra work that we're doing. On shift because of that position.
Yeah, the hour, the phone calls that they're handing out at home, they're not putting overtime for those, it's when they.
Yeah. Work for four hours for fifty bucks.
So what's in here now is it's five percent. Of your yearly base salary. Right, and then. Can pay anything else?
No, they would get paid overtime if they had to respond, come into the station, fix a problem. Or like he's been doing this six months, moving going over there with the merging of the IT. They just had to rebuild the server, the new server that just came in, that, you know, they have to implement that.
Yeah.
So those things would still be done on overtime, at his overtime break.
Where was this? Sorry, where was this?
Where was what?
Where'd he rebuild the server?
The server that just came in.
At the end or Warham server? No, where is that server?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where is that going to be?
The servers are.
That's a him, because I mean, the Warham has it all night.
Talking about the new server.
So you shouldn't be going to Warham any.
Oh, yeah, I gotta go there, I can't give them that full access to our building, all our stuff, I have to go there to kind of observe and do what I have to do in our, our end for that. I can't give them access to our systems.
The stipends more for the handling of phone calls, fixing things remotely while they're off duty. Doing all the other IT stuff, it's not, that's, that's what the initial stipend for. The actual one you're coming in, doing the work was still, and that was our understanding, and if it was misunderstood, it's misunderstood, it is what it is, we. Figured out where the other.
So you get the statement for being the guy, be the guy.
Correct.
Like being supervisor, it's a same. But and the difference, Mike, is that previous one was before a minimum, and now like, okay, we're just going to go on time served, basically.
There was, there was discussion when this all started, because Mike was receiving. And having to be on conference calls and. I'm saying, well, if you're, if he has to be on a conference call at one o'clock. It's a four minute, and Chief Drama is like, no, it's it's one hour. I said, no, because now he can't take a detail. The work is detailed, work four hours, he has to take his time. Then, oh, so you're you're taking money. You're you're limiting him. On making money if he has to handle these calls, so what we came up with was a stipend to handle all this stuff. Which they thought was fair, and then if they were coming in to. Have to come in and actually do the physical work or go to Warham or whatever it is, it's on their, it's on, it's under the contract, it falls under their. You know, four arm minimum, you know, he's been very good about it. If something has to happen at. A conference call has to happen, he's been taking it at one o'clock, come in to work early and only getting an hour of overtime to handle that stuff. So I think he's.
It's a, it's a lot of work and it covers all the stuff, all the extra stuff that's on duty, basically. It's a couple of hours a day, it's server maintenance, all the different programs you run maintenance. All that kind of stuff, that's what that was designed to cover, also happens to cover all the phone calls I get at home that are quick and easy.
But the server maintenance is typically off site or that's onsite?
Server maintenance is always kind of on shift, I'm talking about, this is the only time I come in for overtime is to crash and it's something I could not fix from home or open and it one would become, it was like, and I actually have to physically respond to the building for.
So you're home, you're not on duty, you get a phone call.
So a lot of times we have our, our uh. IMC, which is in our cars, now it's, it locks up. So we have to call him at home, ask him to reset it, he can do it remote. So he logs on, does a remote.
Does he get paid extra for that?
He does not, currently.
Not currently, and that was with the agreement with what we wanted to go with the IT segment, because I.
That's covered in the stipend. That's covered in the stipend.
Correct.
Okay, now something really serious happened.
So we had a server go down. Where he had to come in and he couldn't possibly do it on duty because he's committed to, he has to be committed to fixing that, so that was like. Yeah, three, four hours.
Anything that I I feel uncomfortable doing on duty just takes away from my control responsibilities, I do want overtime.
You schedule the overtime?
Yes, unless it's a warranty. But ninety percent of it, I would not go doing. Yes, unless it's a work, but ninety percent of it, I would not go doing. Like it's out and positive, something like.
I have to say, now, your overtime rate is.
It's that hour forty, forty-five, forty-five.
Right, so, and you think that's a lot, but actually, if you call, Entree or something in like that, I mean, I have H P come in, it's a buck, yeah, right, so, it's not like, might speak. If you had another company come in, it'd be heck of a rate, there's not one that's under a hundred.
I pay fifty dollars an hour for I T service through my business, and that's just the phone.
Right.
So my cost of these fifty bucks.
If I call H P to come into my place, it's from their door, one hundred and forty-nine, right, leading, yeah, right.
It's, if, if, if you, if the town feels like you can do better than what you do before, they have at it, but I, I just.
Oh, yeah, and then give you their number, so, yeah.
And there's, just no way, right?
I wanna be clear, that's not an extraordinary, you know, for I T work, no, it's extremely low. Mike's.
How about the other guy?
He taught him everything he knows.
Cause you can get called in a lot.
I do ninety percent of it, but the whole point of having two is there's some kind of checking out with administrators in the system.
And you have somebody that supervise what he's doing, so if, so he gets the stipend, but when there's something that's, has, somebody has to come in, it's typically one, unless he can't handle himself. So.
But I'm not supervisor, so we have a supervisor that kind of oversees what I do. But I, I know the stuff, he doesn't necessarily know the stuff, but he's overseeing, cause he has that role, that makes sense.
What else we got here?
All right, so we're, we're agreed that the discussion on the, some of the issues tonight will be reflected in the redraft.
Yeah.
The final draft of the contract, which will be signed next week.
Right, I'll just.
Anything. Anything that's.
I didn't know I was supposed to attach that, cause in our last meeting, I discussed, he went over and did the paperwork, and so.
Well, I thought, I thought you were going over stuff that we didn't agree on last meeting. Was like.
We're not the same.
Yeah.
Anything that's an addendum, like, you got a couple things, bring copies of those, or send them to Bob, so we can, oh, yeah, I see this is, oh.
The addendums, he has.
Yeah, he's got them, yeah, we don't have to worry about that.
I see one here, I don't like all the discussed, so, which one? The holiday thing. And sixteen. It's commented, added per past addendum.
Sixteen.
Which may be, but I don't remember seeing that then. Shall not be forced to take a holiday off.
So that was done, so Scott did that when Scott was detective, because he got.
Yeah.
And it does remain with Chief Farnsworth by it.
And that can be, all I'm saying, I don't recall what's coming up, bring us a copy of that addendum.
So we, okay, sure, I know, and that's, that's one of the, that's one of the first two, that was probably done six years ago.
Cause there may be something you discussed with Bob that never made it up, cause you guys had it all.
I've got, I've got. Electronic copies of changes over the last three, four years, I'm not sure that if you go back six or more years, that we've got, we've got that electronically.
Okay, I will, I will get down to.
If it was six or so years ago, would that be under a different contract?
That would have been superseded, even included in past, this is the first time we're taking them off, you can actually include it in one document, the last time you did contract negotiation, we didn't do that.
So they have, that been still carried over on top of the contract?
Yeah, that's what we're trying to, that's crazy.
And that, that one particular. One we're talking about, I think it was literally that, was like the only piece of information that took out of that, because everything else that we negotiate. They gated that, so that was the only piece there, and I'll have it for you shortly.
All right, six thirty Monday.
So. You were talking about safety committee stuff, what was? So we don't have any changes to me, that I'm aware of, for our discussion, I mean, everything.
You're just gonna find any addendum, you're gonna put the safety thing in there, right?
Correct.
I know you do. It was in the past contract, so.
What is, I'm sorry?
The safety committee stuff was in the past contract.
I, I know, I know the section you're referring to. You wanted it more.
Yeah, just a little bit more.
Okay. So we have to add the language that's gonna supersede this contract, supersede any previous.
Yeah.
As of this date, any previous addendums, contracts.
This contract is the one sole piece of.
Correct.
Actually, Bob, that should be the language, I don't think it's there.
Yeah, I, I don't.
It's pretty standard.
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue. And then everything else, we're good.
Thanks, all right.
Good. All right. To Monday. I'll do thirty.
That's never good.
You don't want to bring the file over? Yeah, just cause it was driving us.
That's another issue that. Written a note about.
Like we wanna sign this tonight or next Monday. We'll get it distributed, we'll send it tonight. All right.
So the other item we have is appointment of members to the Henry Wilberham Regional School District Strategic Plan Support Team. And we've got some names here, and they'd like to get that done, because they wanna meet twenty first, twenty? The forty?
Twenty.
Forty.
I was surprised you didn't wanna have them in to chat with us.
Yeah. I didn't think it would necessarily, they sent, a lot of them sent over with their. You know, like, you know, what their background was, and. Anyone who wants to think of things as a paid job.
So the two that have gone directly to Gina, she appointed them, or she, does she want vetting from us as well?
She interviewed them, and she talked to them, and she thought they would both be fine, Gary Smith and Lynn Langley, okay, and then, they're looking for. Some, what they call at large members, you know, they got kind of spots, they got the district administrator, they got school administration, they got board of select, and we got, right, school committee. There's Laura and Bill Bunt, they're teachers, they're looking for three to six teachers, students, they gotta have two students, one from Hamden, one from Wilberham. Parents in the community look over ten to twelve, and she said that she would wait to see from us, how many we were sending over for their record, that, you know, to be appointed.
And have to have the meetings on the football field.
Right, well, and then there's, there's sixteen, so sixteen members of the Wilberham community responded, but no selections have been made, and I, she's called all sixteen Wilberham people, and the two Hamden people. And that she would wait to, to see what we said, and we're to finalize who she chose for, who they chose for the woman. So.
Who's choosing the program, the program for select?
The select winner, yeah, that's part of the agreement, you know.
And they're trying to get that down to the twenty or two as far as.
Yeah, yeah, cause I know, so. The, the people we have interested is Mrs. Glover, who we know is school committee chairman, and the school committee of selectmen and that stuff, and I thought that she, she would be fill one of the, what they call our large roles. And then we have. Rick Cast.
Castellano.
Castellano, who's one of the parks wreck, and also has children in the school system, and he would fill one of the, the fill the elective, the elective official role, right? And then we have. And then we have Anne Marie Noel. Who sent, I think you have her letter there. You know, she has children, assists, I'd like to submit my name of inclusion, professional educator, twelve years, decade of extensive business experience, brag that I have broad experience of contributing to team. I'm a parent of three Hamden children, and she expressed interest, and we have. This is, this is from Brett, 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 just to, to go back, is that. He is, he's on the Parks and Rec, like the Parks and Recs, he's got a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in this administration, he's got children in the system, ages seven, ten, and twelve. That go to three different schools, three of the, three of the different schools.
He's a baseball coach.
And the baseball coach. See, all those I can do tonight. Then Cynthia Miller. Cynthia is. She was in the field of education, she has two children, raised two and five in green medals, she's been in the field of education twenty-four years in a variety of roles. Been a teacher, behaviorist, school adjustment counselor, principal, and currently a special education director, civil rights, homeless, and foster care coordinator. So she was expressing interest, I think she'd be a good choice, and then Kim Montano, and Kim is, she had two school age children, one green medals. Lived in Hamden for seven years, and she has a bachelor's degree. High bachelor's degree in early care and, and education, and then she's teaching at preschool, free K, kindergarten. Green medal, and she became, became the assistant director of private school till her daughter was born, substitute to green medals, and then there's Amanda Woodyer. She's been a resident at town for ten years, worked my entire career, and she worked for the Hamden, Wilberham Regional School District, specifically a green medals. We're gonna read green medals, and.
Was not, yeah.
It was forwarded yesterday.
She's a speech and language.
So.
We're gonna know where you're looking for, Don, I mean, here you've brought up seven.
If they're looking for sixteen people, this goes three, eight, nine, so I would send over all these names, and. They're talking about adding even more, but I try to explain to them, I don't know, how are you gonna handle that?
Once I said, you know, the football field, we are.
Yeah, so, but I would like to send over these and say, these are the people we recommend for our committee, and these people expressed interest.
Well, I would agree to the fact that people expressed, I wouldn't recommend everybody on this list, but they, you know, you want a, a diverse group, I guess, and that's what you're getting.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for, I'd recommend everybody that reached out to me at least. And then all the ones that reached out to Gina, I mean, I think it's a good, good mix of all people.
I'd recommend the ones that reach out to Gina as well, right?
Do we need a motion on this? Yes, please, so I'd like to make a motion to appoint the seven people that you have listed there to the.
And all of it, and that's exclusive, that excludes the two.
There's four, five, six, seven, so I got. The two you have here. Yeah, Gary Smith.
Gary Smith.
Lynn Langley.
My voice.
Mary Ellen.
Mary Ellen.
Well, we're. Greg Castellano, Kim Montano, come, Montana, Cynthia Miller, and Amanda Woodyer.
I got eight listed, if you've got, you've got Gary, Lynn, Mrs. Glover, Noel, Castellano, Miller, Montana, and Woodyer.
Right, so it is. Reframe the formation, reframe the motion, yes.
I just think you should have those names in, that's fine, your motion is to recommend appointments to the strategic plan committee?
Yes.
Is that good? A little discussion.
Again, I just think my point, I don't endorse every candidate on this list, but I agree there should be a diverse membership.
All in favor? So tomorrow. Drop these off to you, and then you can fax them over to Gina, and I'll send her an email, tell these other people, then I'll send an email to the people, tell them they're appointed, so they'll know to hear from her, okay? All right, got it. Change in the health insurance premium split.
So we have. Well, there's, there's a letter, in other words, if it's going to be a change, it would apply to all, I think the decision was it would apply to all town employees, so. Letter is there to notify all town employees of a three-stage change, starting with sixty percent, January one, seventy percent, July one, seventy-five percent, July one, two thousand twenty-three.
Well, I think, I think Don's point, and we, more before, was that we had an existing contract with Highway Union.
Yes.
So, if you're not willing to open that up, or give them, I don't understand, there are four people in the town.
So I, I, I will be in touch with the union and reopen that contract and make the adjustments.
So, I think, I think we have to look at the handbook to see if there's any.
And the handbook there.
Does, are we able to do this?
Yes.
Carol raised the question that it might be a. Whether they're gonna be a qualifying event, but I don't think it is.
That was a question, do you open enrollment?
No, 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 actually, we had a discussion of that.
I think that's like, if you lose your job, or.
Right.
People that were gonna start changing it, that it would pull up as a call.
Oh, except for the big thing that's gonna happen is if we take the change, but all of a sudden, you said there's potential that they're gonna start putting in deductions, if, as the plan expands from Skidink Valley, that will be a huge change.
And they're gonna do that, they're going to do that.
Oh, I'm sure.
Regardless of what we decide.
Right, that's gonna make a big difference for people.
That's coming.
But we're talking about, if we do this, if we get to sixty, forty, get all the paperwork done by January, then May is open enrollment, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So it's not a change effective January one, it's effective July one, correct?
No, January one.
No, January one.
Okay, but open enrollment is.
Open enrollment would, the seventy percent would be July one.
Correct.
So we'll just inform Dick that now he's gonna adjust the win. Right.
Right, well, we gotta, we gotta get, we gotta be able to get the, we have time to get the employee handbook, the contracts, and all, in, in the, in the order.
That goes back to your point before, and you were like, well, by way, and I'm like, let's be fair, we're not talking big money.
So we're not.
So we're not, I'm not sure I understood the earlier discussion. You're not going to change that part of the handbook that provides the same. Premium split to retirees as it does to current employees, right?
Well, right now, right now it provides the same, so that language.
Do we have anything there about the Medicare though, that they have to take Medicare? Insurance company requires. No, no, we, I, I looked at that, when you're sixty-five, you have to switch to Medicare. What happened was this, it used to be that a town had to adopt.
Right.
That mandate, that, that law was changed. In two thousand eleven, so now the state is basically forced all town employees. To move to Medicare once you reach the age of sixty-five.
So the head of the highway union did reach out to me and say, are we opening, are we up for negotiation next year? I said, sure. Typically, they go, I don't know, it's two meetings and we're done with those guys. But we shouldn't at least bring him in to say, okay, we need a memorandum of understanding that we're gonna amend your contract to get the same. Change that every other employee is gonna get, you're good with that.
But right after the first of the year, or whatever we wanna do, we should get the highway union in here and the highway superintendent.
Sure enough.
And the tree ward, all whose contracts expire. I'd like to, again, I'd like to get it done before they're up. Everybody's up June thirty, yeah. They're up June thirty. And the contract for the highways. Alright, anything else? Did you find something? We have assigned the letter to the employees.
Seven, one, two thousand eighteen.
So the cap's no longer there, so this is.
I see these here.
Those are all I have.
I know, but I don't see typically, we had a little bit like a signature down here.
That's number three, the, the whole business of, of holidays.
So what sparked that? And you may know. Is when Scott was detective. He was on what's considered an add-in schedule Monday through Friday. And she friends came in and said, for instance, this past Monday was Columbus Day, you have to take that day off. And Scott said, no, I don't wanna be forced to take it off if I want to work, I wanna be able to work and then bank it like every other member. As use it when I want to use it, so that was the agreement that was made with the town, I wasn't part of it. I know Scott can speak to it, because he's the one that did it. So. I don't think it's. I don't think it's a major deal with the current detective, so, and I think that was the only position it really affected. Because everybody else contractually can bank it if they want to bank it or use it. So I don't really think it's.
No, I'm just saying, if this is something that was discussed, really, every other one I see has signatures from the board that they.
This is all I have. Look for it, we'll. Again, like I said, Scott brought that up, so if that's not. That was given to me when I took over, so I'm just providing the information that I got, so.
Alright, see you Monday. Let's see, we're over here. Minutes. We have minutes. August second.
I know, I sent a bunch out. I don't know why they've been half done, I guess we had another meeting and then I started another meeting.
I'd like to highlight the word mock.
They changed the motion to approve August second, twenty-one minutes. All in favor?
I have August thirtieth.
Was Paul Marquez, that person from?
Yes.
The drive for?
Yeah. And by the way, I want to thank him because he did supply a third one, even though the original proposal was for two, I reached out because they weren't aware of the bathroom downstairs. And they did donate a third one for the new bathroom.
They did?
Yes, and installed it.
September twenty-seventh.
Motion to approve. I'll burn them at work, we can do them, probably do them.
Town, selectmen's reports.
We actually have a COE meeting, again, a lot of discussion on. Going forward with a proposal for an expansion project, just getting their ducks in a row, what's needed, take a look. Meeting coming up for housing authority, planning board, I think we're all pretty aware of what's happening there. On the board, there is no planning board meeting next week, so we all have the week off. Like that Don step up and be the zoom operator. Technology's your friend. And for that, the water project's moving well, we got the approval from the state. That the language was correct. District expansion, so if the bins are opening next week, Bob, is that correct, Wednesday next week?
Correct.
Take us to the next step.
Parks is meeting tomorrow, will probably be a low attended meeting because of fan work. We finally made the cut over in the town hall to Web City Fiber. On Tuesday, so we just connected our ties with Spectrum Internet Service, next to Ham, called and he canceled that. And we are strictly running Web City.
Is there, have you talked to them about? How hard would it be to do, and I talked to Nate in Wilberham about this a couple of years ago. They did a dark fiber run to their municipal buildings, can we do something either wireless or? But by the poles we have to get to the fire station and mark so we can drop. Now, they're not expensive, the cable charges for their two buildings are nothing like what we have here. But it is approaching a hundred dollars a month and could we connect them to the fiber way up here without increasing our cost?
Wirelessly, probably, I don't know.
Wirelessly, probably at least in the fire.
As far as.
We do two poles that go to the highway department, so.
I mean. I, I, I guess we could, I don't know what they would entail, whether.
What would you recommend?
Yeah, I mean, they may try to charge us more for that.
Well, if it's less than what we're paying, that's good, if it's more than, it's not worth it.
It's coming out of their budget currently, right?
Right, yeah.
After the town meeting, the next step would be to meet again, get the fiber committee together again. And bring in Web City Fiber and begin the discussion of what can be done and at what price. Especially after the town meeting, if they adopt part one of the article.
That grant, right, so we can do the study.
Yes. Administrator's report, I don't have a written report, almost all of my time was spent on the warrant this week. With a few other one-line sessions, but basically it's been with the warrant, trying to get the numbers correct. These items. Short week.
Can quickly, Don, can we talk about the MRSC lease? We do have an amended lease to discuss because. The original number didn't include the decommissioning bond, the number recommended by planning. So that brings down the number and the extra charge were also because the coverage is less because of the highway department's request. To leave their pile of dirt and quakes. So the money we're getting, which was originally at around one forty, is now down to one sixteen or something like that. But it's one sixteen a year. It's still a pretty good deal for the town.
That accommodates the highway departments.
It does accommodate, we kept there, kept that thing. One thing I'd like to propose to board in conversation with conservation, they'd like. I wanna say your, your fun word, stubborn, if you will. But I'd like to request that in the lease, we allocate some of the proceeds from the lease toward the conservation fund. And the number we're kicking around is five thousand. That so, because they're doing a conservation restriction on matching land. There's something, if you want, I'll pick for tat or whatever, but there's a, a benefit to conservation from it. And I'd like to both we, that the lease amendments include that, if you will. Incumbrance from the lease money towards the conservation. I think we saw, actually, they, they sent a proposal to Bob.
Yes.
It doesn't really affect any, we're still gonna. No, on the per. Every year, so.
So.
We'll keep making the hundred and ten and they get five thousand.
Is that gonna go towards their payroll or what are they gonna do with that five thousand?
That's for land acquisition in future, basically, as they build that up. Typically, that money goes towards a match, you might find a parcel available. And DCR might say, okay, fine, we'll give you a hundred thousand, but town's gotta kick in ten. And this gives them that type of fund, Don, you go back. That's where the money came from for the Loboti purchase.
Or don't they have a thousand dollars to do that with right now, so?
Every year, yeah, that gets you nothing, remember?
Didn't, didn't we get rid of the thousand dollar?
Something to talk about, but again, you know.
Getting five times as much.
There you go. And do want to compliment, if you did see, they did actually, they sent along a picture of a turtle they saw during the turtle sleep. I didn't see an Amazon sticker on it, I'm not quite sure, they actually found it up there.
Paper in there.
Car code on the back.
Alright, anything else, so they're gonna, so we're gonna see something.
Because of decreasing costs.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn. Next, next meeting, six thirty PM at the Thornton Burgess School prior to the town meeting.